Could you please rise and honor our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Leary. Six present, one absent.
Thank you. We have minutes, approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, December 4th. Moved to accept by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have permission to enter. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To school works in the amount of $9,800 to provide services for level four monitoring site visits required by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That will include a one-day site visit and follow-up report as required by the Merklin School Redesign Grant. Funding will be provided by the Merklin School Redesign Grant.
Thank you. Any discussion? Moved to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin? Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary. Six shays, one nay, one absent. Approved.
Next, we have memorials. Dr. Michael T. Foley, brother of Mary Alice Foley, retired Butler School Assistant Principal. If you'd all please rise in a moment of silence and dock in chambers. Next, we have motions. First motion by Mr. Robert Gignac, request the superintendent develop a drug abuse prevention and awareness task force for the Lowell Public Schools. Task force should include but not be limited to school department staff, city officials, public safety officials, health officials, and members of the public. Task force should also work to develop strategies to address drug abuse issues throughout the district. Seconded by Mr. Conway, Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the motion is pretty self-explanatory. Over the past two years, I've worked with former Assistant Superintendent Ann Murphy and current Assistant Superintendent Janine Durkin on a, with a group of people to address drug abuse issues without, throughout the city. And I think this is an issue that we need to address hands-on and continue that over the next few years, even though I won't be involved. I think this is something that the district needs to stay focused on as drug abuse issues are something that affects more students than we think. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next motion by Mr. Robert Gignac, request superintendent examine the feasibility of bringing back the library media specialist to the school district. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this motion is a little premature. However, I think this is something that the committee should look at during budget session. When I was at the high school and in the Lowell Public Schools as a student, we had a library media specialist at each and every school. And that person was critical in the involvement of the students' process throughout the district. That person was not only a librarian, but also a teacher. That person guided, guided the student throughout their process at those schools. I think it's a critical position that the school district unfortunately cut years ago that I, I think it's worthwhile to look at and see if it's a possibility to bring back, whether it's this coming year or years down the road. It's absolutely something we should be looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next motion by Ms. Kristen Ross Sikewich, request the superintendent work with Lowell High School administration to develop a comprehensive recruitment strategies and outreach to all eighth-grade students in the district. Seconded by Ms. Scott, Ms. Ross Sikewich.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, private and charter schools disperse materials through, throughout the district to all of our middle school students, I'm sorry, rather, to all of our eighth-grade students in the district. And yet, we do so little promotion of Lowell High School to our eighth-grade students. I know this year, we had a tremendous turnout for our eighth-grade open house and, but still there's more to be done. You know, our other schools are competing for our, our children and competing for those dollars. And we need to impress upon our families and our children in eighth grade throughout this, throughout the district that LHS is not a last resort, it's a first choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. The next three motions by myself, if Mr. Conway would please take the chair.
By Mayor Patrick Murphy, the request the superintendent explore potential for the district-wide Olympics. Mayor Murphy on the motion. A second by Mr. Gignac. Mayor Murphy on the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a motion similar to what I've brought to the City Council. The administration had responded that they would look into developing a few, a few kind of, in different, different races and things, events for the winter fest and then to do something in the, in the summer. That hasn't happened, so I figured it'd be better to bring it to this board and maybe start a little bit smaller and, and to coordinate with some of the motions that have been brought up by you, Mr. Vice Chair, and certainly the committee man, Mr. Leary, to advance some, both physical fitness, but also to build community with, within the city, to have that kind of exchange and competition that I think is healthy in a number of ways for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, the next motion by Mayor Patrick Murphy, request the superintendent explore with teachers the idea of family literacy night. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Mr. Mayor, Murphy, on the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something that I've certainly talked with Madam Superintendent about. It's something that's worked well in Lawrence that has really brought a number of parents to, to events outside of the classroom to, both on the evenings and during the weekends, has, has been able to garner a lot of support from, from people within the community because people are involved in, in writing, but they're also then involved in their, their students' and their, their kids' education. And so, it's worked well in, in places like Lawrence, and I think it can be replicated here. And so, I appreciate the superintendent working on that, as I know she's begun.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more discussion on the motion? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we move on in the agenda, I think it's the school committee's tradition to invite the incoming school committee members to, to come sit with us. So, if, if you don't mind, I think we should introduce School Committee Men-elect Mr. Gendron to come sit aside you.
Mr. Gendron, would you like to join us?
Quite happy to be here, but I'll join you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignac. Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next motion by Mayor Patrick Murphy, request the school committee register its support for House Bills 345, 398, and 491, requiring certain measures in the approval and administration of charter schools within any given school district. Seconded by Kim, Kim Scott. Mr. Mayor, on the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are very straightforward motions, and they're really not anti-charter schools per se. It's, it's just requiring that those charter schools that are approved are approved in the right way and in a way that, that fit within the district's goals. The three bills require, first, that, that the charter schools operate on a nonprofit status, which all of our other schools certainly do. The second is looking at making sure that all the teachers within the charter schools receive proper certification and certification that, that all our public schools receive. And, and lastly, that the, the bill requires, the third bill requires that this committee actually approves the, any new charter school within the community, so that you do have charter schools that fit within the district's goals and objectives. I think that's proper. I think that, that ensures that, that all of us students within the city are educated in, in the same way and to their maximum potential. And so, it, so it is pretty straightforward. And, and there are certainly ways to meet this if you are a charter school. We have a charter school that, in, in the city that does a very good job of, and has just been recognized by the, the Department of Education, is doing a fairly good job at educating a population that really needs, that has special needs in terms of second language acquisition and everything else. So, I think it's important for all of our kids within the city that, that we, we approve of this, these three legislative measures and that we send that approval to our legislators so that they might be able to, to argue on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the, the three bills, I can say, you know, as an individual, I support all three. I know that in the past, when we've had kind of outs, you know, applicable legislation pending, we have used it as an opportunity to bring the delegation in so that we can have, as a committee, a conversation about outstanding issues. And I would say, if perhaps, we might want to take this, take this motion and use it as an opportunity to call, whether it's a special meeting of the school committee or perhaps one of the subcommittees, either would be fine with me if it's, if it's amenable to the maker of the motion, that would allow us to invite the delegation in so that we could have a more comprehensive conversation about something like this, that I would defer to my colleague.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm perfectly amenable to, to having that discussion, or to the school committee having that discussion, I would say. And so, I would recommend the subcommittee rather than a special meeting before the end of the year. But I do think it is an important discussion to have. If we, we, we had circumstances this year that if, if things had turned out differently for a proposed charter school, we had, would have been in a very difficult financial situation. The only reason that we weren't was because a charter school wasn't able to find space in order to accommodate all of their needs in the timeframe that they had, and therefore, we were able to work with the state to, to get some, some more funding through that. But otherwise, we would have been potentially in the hole, one and a half million dollars, which would have affected definitely the, the education that our students receive. So, I think it's important to, to move forward with this kind of legislation and to involve our, our members of the delegation, both, you know, all of the state representatives as well as the state senator, so that we are able to push this forward on the state level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Next, we have a motion by, again, Mr. Robert Gignac, request the school committee take a formal vote to rename the Lowell Adult Education Center to Frederick Abessy Adult Education Center of Lowell. Seconded by Mr. Leary, Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also Mr. Leary for seconding the motion. Over the past two years, I've met many educators, many members of the community that have been involved in the educational process throughout the city, and no one is more deserving than Mr. Fred Abessy of that, of this title. Mr. Abessy created the Lowell Adult Education Center many years ago, before I was born, and he has brought it through for a very long time to make it the number-one adult education center in the state. And Mr. Abessy is, is the gentleman that doesn't like recognition, so when I told him this, that I was putting this motion forward, he had very few words to say. However, I think Mr. Abessy is most deserving of this motion, and I think his legacy will live on with this title. So, I thank the committee for supporting this motion. I don't know if Mr. Abessy or the current Adult Ed Director, Betty McKinnon, has anything to say, however, I think this motion is one of the proudest motions I've put forward over the past two years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignac. I will say before, Mr. Leary, that, that I do think it is a good motion, and I certainly have, have talked with my father, who's had all kinds of, has worked certainly with Mr. Abessy in the past, before you were born, and, and it's well-deserved. So, Mr. Leary.
Just briefly, I'm glad I made it. Lot of traffic out there today, but I really, I'm glad I made it to this motion, because this is, is, of all the motions that we've had, all the difficult decisions we make, this is, it, it has to be one of the best motions in a long time, because we're honoring one of the giants of Lowell education. And what a privilege it is to actually vote yes on this and actually, you know, know the individual that created and has managed and worked with these fine folks who have run, I guess, the largest adult ed in this, in New England and, and one of the largest in the United States of America. So, I'm glad Mr. Gignac put this motion on, and I'm, and I'm very happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I obviously have to echo my colleague's sentiments. I do think it's an inspired motion, and certainly one that I think the full committee is very excited about and excited to support. I would say that we do have our ad hoc building naming subcommittee, which gives us an opportunity in that subcommittee to kind of go through the process with, with Mr. Abessy, maybe perhaps more importantly, with his family, friends, and many, many fans, to ensure that we build an event that's appropriate to the, to the stature of the individual. So, I would make the recommendation that this be referred to the ad hoc building naming subcommittee.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Thank you. On the motion itself, to approve, so moved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Mr. Abessy, would you like to say?
I'm very honored, and as Committee, Committee Man Gignac said, I think I was, the term I would use is a little on the shell-shocked side of things. I, when he had mentioned that he was going to make the motion, I was like, ah, you know, I was just very honored, and I really appreciate the, the thought and, but with that thought, I also want to say, I think of adult ed as kind of a puzzle, and I'm one part of it. And with, what we do, I think, well in Lowell is work together. Some of the head teachers and the new director, Betty McKinnon, is here, and we do a good job together. I don't think of myself as any more important over these years than they are. Together, we, I think we do have a good team, and we're, and I'm, I think where I do give myself a lot of credit is I'm pretty good at picking people, and I've picked some unbelievable staff people, teachers and other staff members, and that's what I think I do give myself some credit for. But I'm very honored and appreciative of the motion and thought. I've never, ever even thought about it before, because, again, I think of it more as a team kind of thing, but I really appreciate all your efforts and all your thoughts. And also, at this time, I'd like to thank the superintendent again for choosing Betty McKinnon to take my place. You know, after 35 years starting the program and developing it and working with the incredible staff that we have, you want to make sure that the program kind of continues and, and keeps on moving ahead. And honestly, I can tell you, it never moved back one half step. That's why I don't think, you know, sometimes the front person gets credit for things, but it really is a team effort, and the second Betty McKinnon took over my position, it just kept going forward, 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 and there was never any, the staff, I don't know that they even noticed a change. So, thank you, Superintendent Franco, for that too, and thank you for the motion and the thought, and everyone, while a lot of people know how hard Committee Man Gignac has been working for the last two years for the school department, so for him to even make the motion, and I know how he's been doing so many things, for him to even think about it was like, I think I was totally shell-shocked when he called. Thank you again. Appreciate it, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Abessy. Mr. Gignac? Any further? Next motion by Ms. Kristen Ross Sikewich and Kimberly Scott, request the superintendent create a performance plan and a set of expectations for staff identified and compensated to maintain middle and elementary school websites and monitor on a regular basis the content that is made available on those same websites to ensure that the appropriate and useful information is being made available to our families in a timely manner. No seconded required. Ms. Ross Sikewich.
I think the motion speaks for itself. It was pretty comprehensive, wasn't it? And actually, just a little, a little bit further explanation, and I've gotten some emails from, from parents trying to find information on their respective school, child schools, websites, and either links weren't working or the hyperlinks weren't linked to anything else. And I think that, you know, if, if we're actually compensating staff to maintain these individual school websites, then certainly that information should be kept up to date and timely information should be put up on a timely basis. Thank you.
Thank you for also speaking on the motion. Any further discussion? Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to relate to that, there was the, I'm sorry, relate to, that there was a wide range of quality and information on the individual school websites. I don't know how we can, what type of plan we can come forward with, but just even for the calendars to stay current, they were just feeding in the information from the district website. They weren't updated for the individual schools. Again, there was a wide range. There were some excellent websites, some people that are doing excellent work, but there were some that just, they just weren't up to date. So, if we could take a look at those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next motion, uh, next section, we have subcommittees. First, the subcommittee report, Lowell High School, report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd, 2013. Mr. Conway.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you well know, the, the reporting out on the Lowell High School Subcommittee is usually a rather lengthy one, which you have mentioned numerous times. So, I am going to make this as brief as possible and try to stay to the salient points. The members, myself, Mr. Gignac, Kristen Ross Sikewich, and also President Gene Franco, Claire Abrams, and Brian Martin, Headmaster, and Amy McLeod, Lowell High School Curriculum Coordinator. There were two agenda items, the House Master's Scorecard and the House Master and Department Head Instructional Leadership. And basically, under the House Master Scorecard, we were talking much about, it revolved around attendance, how to improve it, how to better make communication with the, with parents and with staff members. And also, we talked about the Grade Nine Repeater Advisory, and discussed was the evidence, and that is what we talk about, the follow-up on all these items that we discussed that night. There was a motion by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by Mr. Gignac, to recommend the committee as a whole to accept the report as a report of progress. The second item was a House Master and Department Head Instructional Leadership, and this was basically talking about the instructional leadership at Lowell High School was focusing on, on the teaching and learning, and educators meeting and planning to ensure that the best practices take place in the classroom. And at this point, there have been many meetings have taken place since the beginning of the school year. And again, not to get into all the, all the details, but basically what they're looking at is trying to, when administrators are going to the classroom, they're taking a look at the best practices and, and also being able to identify what are they looking for when they go into the classroom, and that's, that's extremely important, and then have the follow-up. The, there was a motion by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by Ms. Gignac, to recommend the committee as a whole to accept the report as a report of progress, and that was three, nothing. And motion by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewich, to adjourn their meeting at 6:50 PM. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Conway, for that comprehensive report. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress, so moved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Conway. On the motion, Ms. Martin? No, you're just raising your hand for whatever reason. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have a Personnel Subcommittee, approval of the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, December 4th, 2013. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much like my colleague, I've also been accused of having long reports to this committee from the Personnel Subcommittee.
Rightly so.
This evening, we have already approved these minutes at our previous meeting. This is only the, the written documentation of it. I would submit it to the full committee for approval.
Motion to approve by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have a Policy Subcommittee, report and approve the minutes of meeting of Thursday, December 12th, 2013. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Policy Subcommittee met on Thursday, December 12th, President or myself, Kristen Ross Sikewich, and David Conway. Also present was Superintendent Gene Franco, Deputy Superintendent Jay Lang, City Solicitor Christine O'Connor, and Assistant City Solicitor Michael Carlson. The only, the lone agenda item was moving forward with the policy manual review. We are unable to use the mass school committees at this time because of a lack of indemnification for the city, so we will be working with the city solicitor's office to move forward. The goal will be to review one or two sections of the policy manual each month and bring forward recommendations for revisions and updates to the Subcommittee. After review at the Subcommittee level, the proposed policies will be forwarded to the full committee. A motion was made by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by David Conway. A motion was made by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by David Conway, to take it as a report of progress.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Motion to accept as a report of progress, so moved by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewich. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Excuse me? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have reports of the superintendent, the Crest Collaborative Agreement. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked the committee if we could just defer this meeting to, this particular report to the next meeting. Mr. Lang wanted to check something financial and we just discussed it. So, if we could just defer this to the next, next meeting with your approval.
Motion to refer to the next meeting by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have cancellation of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, January 1, 2014. Thank you, Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. We have the Corey Check update. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, and the Corey Check Report, this is an update on the legislation that was passed in September of 2013. It is an answer to a motion by Mr. Gignac, who requested superintendent to work with the proper state agencies to ensure the district is prepared to begin federal background checks during the hiring process. And so, the legislation really is asking for us to make sure that all new employees that come in are, in fact, this particular year for the 14th school year, that as employees come in, they are going through the finger check process. And so, that is what we're planning to do. Then additionally, the state of Massachusetts is figuring out a process of how we, in fact, check all employees for fingerprinting and how that would be done on a, on a regular basis. And so, we and the Lowell Public Schools intend to, of course, work with the vendors that have been approved through the, through the processes, the federal process, the state funding processes. And if you look at the last page of the report, we will be adopting the state regulations. We're going to, of course, begin any new employees getting the fingerprinting place as required by the law. And then, we're going to develop a phase-in schedule for employees hired prior to July 1, 2013. So, there's facts on this particular law, but what we want to do is make sure we follow the regulations as deemed by the state. And so, we are in that process right now.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. So, do we have a timeline in place? My understanding was that there was still work going on at the state level to develop the appropriate registry. So, have we moved forward with that at all or?
We, Mr. Cassidy is, is in contact with them all the time and so, he is waiting for their, their approval and everything, but they have, in fact, approved certain vendors that are being funded through the state vending process. And so, in fact, we're following the process as it occurs. So, I believe as Michael Cassidy, the Director of Personnel and Recruitment, finds out about it, that's how we're doing it. So, that's how it's, it's been going.
But it's current?
Yes.
Where, as people, if someone gets hired tomorrow, their fingerprints are being sent to the state and they're being, or through the vendor and they're being checked. Is that, so it's current as of today?
Is that right?
I don't know. No, the state is still in the process of selecting the, it's going to be three or four in our area vendors where you can go to to have the fingerprinting done. So, I believe the hope is to have that done right after the first of the year. Once that happens, we have to go back and have any of our staff that were hired just for the start of the school year current, to have them done. And I would imagine that would be done the first quarter of the new calendar year. And then, we have to come up with a plan to have all existing staff in the district done over the next year or so. So, we actually still don't have the vendor that we'll be using yet. That's supposed to come to us after the first of the year. But I would think between January and March or so, we'll have all the new staff fingerprinted. But they really have to, to get their contracts in place first with the vendors. And then, we'll have some policy recommendations to bring forward to you to, to review and approve prior to the fingerprinting to begin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this report? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have a report on the math resource teacher. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to a motion by Mr. Gignac, request the superintendent provide a report on staffing levels of the math coach position district-wide. The report should include the feasibility of expanding full-time coaching at each school. And Mrs. Abrams provided this report and it is definitely budget-related, but I'm going to ask Mrs. Abrams to go over the details of the report and what it would cost to be at full staff.
Thank you. So, at the present time, we have a total of 12 math resource teachers in the district. Eight of the 12 are shared between two schools. And if, in fact, we were able to go back to what we had before, we would have to employ eight more positions, full-time positions. And in doing that, given that we have our alternative schools that do not have math resource teachers either, I would recommend if we were going to make a movement that we include another one so that we would have a total of 21. And which you can see from the report, that definitely would have budget implications as we move into budget season. But I also did give you some research, some information that I did gather, that I believe in. I really think the presence of a math coach, math resource teacher in all schools is critical. And I understand, as I was in my former position, when the positions were cut back, those are changes we needed to make at that time. Moving forward and giving some of the recent mathematics data that we've received, I think it's a critical topic to keep our eye on. I believe that math resource teachers in schools full-time definitely have an impact. And it's very difficult for any teacher, for any specialist who travels between school. But given the depth of what we're asking our teachers to do and the depth of the common core state standards in mathematics and in literacy, there's a lot. So, I did bring this forward. You do have the financial implications of that and that's it. Thank you.
Any discussion on this report? Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Superintendent Franco and Superintendent Abrams for bringing this forward. I brought this motion on because I've had discussions with the math coaches and in relation to the math scores that we received and we are struggling in that area district-wide. And if you notice, the schools that have full-time math coaches are providing more growth in their performance. And I think this is something that the committee should be looking at come budget season where it's relatively short money to make the progress that we need. If we want to improve our math scores, this is an avenue that we need to take. And this was brought to me a few months ago to look at and it's something I took quite a bit of time before I brought it forward to the committee. However, I think it's something that the committee should be looking at come budget season because it is a very cost-effective way to improve our scores, to improve the overall quality of the education that the kids are receiving. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignac. Any further discussion on this report? Entertaining a motion to accept as a report of progress, so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have a report on the partnership for assessment of readiness for college and careers. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in our last meeting, more clarification was asked on the PARC testing, how much time it takes, the cost associated with it, and whether there's an option to opt out. And so, there has been many communications with the state of Massachusetts, the Department of Education, and they have indicated the following mandates. And so, there are two tests that are coming in. There is a, what they call a performance-based assessment, which is in March, March to April. And there's also, in mathematics in ELA, there's also an end-of-the-year test in ELA from May 5 to June 6. And there's an end-of-the-year test in mathematics from May 5 again to June 6. So, overall, the state of Massachusetts says, has indicated that 10% of classrooms are going to be tested in the PBA or EOU, EOU, as they say in ELA, Massachusetts. So, here's the amount of time that's involved. If it is a performance-based assessment in English Language Arts, there are three sessions and each session are two and a half hours for two of the sessions, two for the last one. In mathematics, there are two sessions for two hours. And the end-of-the-year testing in English Language Arts, there are two sessions, two hours each, and in mathematics, also additionally. When you look into the testing and how you can group that within time, there are field tests that are going across the state. When I spoke directly to the commissioner in charge of this particular test, they were very clear, and it's in all of the writing, that you can opt out of MCAS but not opt out of PARC. And so, that was something they do with the field testing. I asked specifically about using technology because there is a paper and pencil test to this and on the third page, you can see each school that has been randomly chosen, it's well, more than 10%, but that has been chosen in Lowell. And so, there's two pieces. And I asked about the technology piece for this particular assessment and told them that our, our technology for a number of years is not up to standard. So, even a child taking a test online is something that we would, would find challenging. Also, although this committee has supported iPads and resource laboratories, that we, we would be challenged to make sure we had the technology that was necessary. When I asked that question, the commissioner was, was very specific in saying, Ms. Franco, that's why we're giving this field test, so we can learn what needs to be implemented in the state for us to be able to run this. So, we'll be able to say within the next year, because this is a two-year program, before, before it counts for the academic outcomes specifically, that we'll be able to say that places like Lowell, Massachusetts do not have the resources to be able to do this test. He also indicated that when you're taking the PARC test, it is not the same strict, almost sequestering the test. It's specific with MCAS. So, they said there would be more flexibility to give it at different times of the day. So, those are the details that we'll learn through this process, Ms. Scott, as looking at that particular pieces. And so, the exemption will be to opt out of MCAS. But it's interesting because as you know, and I will be providing after the new year more indicators, all of the outcomes that we get as a state are based on MCAS. So, all the accountability pieces, so you can, as I said, opt out of MCAS but not opt out of PARC. And so, in speaking with principals, the PARC test comes after MCAS and the principals and are, really want to have the accountability data that's intact because we will not get the same data, they will be left, information will be left out if, in fact, we do not take the MCAS. So, that is all that we have studied. Mrs. Abrams also has been in contact. We've been to meetings on this and that is what we learned as far as opting out. And it is a load of testing and I absolutely agree, but I just wanted to tell you what the options were as far as the mandate for, for cities and towns in Massachusetts and not, not the answer we want to hear, but that's what we heard. So, I welcome any questions, any clarifications that anybody may have.
Thank you. Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that information, Superintendent. So, there, I just want to make sure there is no overlap on the test at all with the MCAS you said?
No, there is not an overlap. And in the ELA and the mathematics are at different times, so the testing does not occur at the same time.
Okay. It is very disheartening to me, honestly, as a parent. We have the benchmark tests going over and over again, the MCAS test, now the PARC test. I just think it's really overwhelming to students and to staff. So, I guess my only question that I could ask at this time is, you said that the district does not have the option to opt out of the PARC. Do parents have the option to opt out of that testing?
I will do more research, Ms. Scott, but everything that I have read has not, I've read nothing that states that there can be an opt-out in any, in any way, but I don't know if Mrs. Abrams has any more information. We hadn't seen that. But I will ask specifically that question because I'm on a first-name basis with the associate commissioner that's in charge of this. So, I have seen nothing as far as this particular product. And I know that I've been following one of the suburbs, Acton, who as a city was looking towards opting out and that wasn't allowed, as far as I know. But if you would like for me to ask that question and get that information out to the committee, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to accept in place and files, so moved by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have the personnel report. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the monthly report that updates all of us on retirements, resignations, and any new hires or promotions that have occurred in the district.
Thank you. Any discussion? Move to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewich. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have a report on the car seat safety. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in response to a motion that was made by, by member Kristen Ross Sikewich, which requested the superintendent work in partnership with the public safety officials to provide education and outreach to our school families around the importance of securing children in car seats and seat belts when transferring children. I'm going to ask Ms. Durkin to report out on this particular report as she prepared it.
Thank you. Child passenger safety is provided through the Lowell Police Department Safety and Crime Prevention Department. Specifically, Officer Paul Corcoran is the Massachusetts Certified Child Passenger Safety Technician. And we have been in communication with Officer Corcoran. He is going to be providing for all of our parent liaisons in January, training and also provide us with opportunities for scheduling for parent groups for all of the schools. Also, he works in collaboration with the Mass Safety Officers League and attached, you'll see some of the flyers that they've created. We are going to provide all the schools with those flyers that'll also be on the website. So, that's all there for your review.
Thank you. Any discussion on this report? Ms. Ross Sikewich.
I would just like to say thank you for the work that you've done on this. I think it's a valuable motion for our families and certainly a message that needs to be reinforced from all angles to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this report? Entertaining a motion to accept as a report of progress, so moved by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have a report on behavior intervention program update. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee member Kim Scott requested that I report on the behavior intervention programs being used at individual schools and how the success of each program has been measured. Ms. Durkin has been in contact with all the school principals for details by school, which are provided here and I will ask Ms. Durkin to report out on her findings.
Thank you. So, what you have before you is a summation of what each of the schools are reporting as behavior intervention programs. What you'll note is, overall, most of our elementary schools are using some form of a positive intervention program, whether it be Go Green, where children start each day in, on the green level. And we want them to maintain that or even do better. So, children and families are very well-versed in this. Many of our schools at the middle level, starting last year, piloted the PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions in Support, as well as the Lowell High School Freshman Academy. It's not a program, it's a framework for providing behavioral interventions in which, if you look at each of the different schools that adopted this, they're very different and unique to the schools. and unique to the schools' settings. So all of that is there for your review, as well as a measure of their success. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion of this report? Ms. Rosikowicz?
In reading through that, I found it really interesting, and actually, I came away with the same conclusion that I came away with when we had the bullying intervention report that was issued to us several months back. In my mind, there's just such an inconsistency across the district. And are we actually capturing information, behavioral information, district-wide in setting benchmarks? And, you know, how are we measuring up as a district year to year in terms of decreasing negative behaviors? And how are we measuring within each of the individual schools' progress in the actual effectiveness of the interventions that are put in place? So those are just my questions. I'd really like us to explore this a little bit more. You know, I think that if you have a district like ours where you do have trans latency between schools, that, you know, you have one behavior modification system at one school, and then you go to another school, and it's something completely different. And, you know, kids are kids, and they need consistency. So those are the concerns that I have about the behavioral systems that we have in behavioral control systems that we have in the district. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion of this report? And say a motion to accept is a report of progress, so moved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have home education. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a request from two families to home educate their children. Janet Laporte from Lilly Avenue and Shauna Hasty from Bernstedt Street. If your permission is granted, the number of families approved by the Lowell School Committee to homeschool children will be 31 families with a total number of children of 48.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Rosikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. Next, we have convention and conference requests, a request for approximately eight to 12 students from Lowell High School Boys and Girls Tracks and Field Team, along with Coaches Phil Meyer, Tim Patterson, and Scott Willett, to travel to Dartmouth Relays in Hanover, New Hampshire on Friday, January 10th, and Saturday, January 11th, 2014. Students will miss one-half of a day of school. All expenses, approximately $600, will be paid by the friends of the Lowell High School Track Committee, and no substitute teachers are needed. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rosikowicz. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Rosikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your indulgence, I'd like to make a point of personal privilege and take this opportunity, as this is our final meeting of this two-year session, to thank both yourself and Mr. Gignac, who have been wonderful colleagues during these last two years. I know all my colleagues would like to take a moment to offer their thanks as well, but the administration and specifically Mr. Pennard have put together a, I'm not going to call it a gag reel, but a brief video celebrating these last two years. If we could, take a moment to watch that.
Patrick Murphy brought his caring and concern for Lowell to our City Council in 2010. Then, when he was elected mayor in 2012, he brought that same commitment and positive energy over to the school committee. Tonight, all of us join to express our gratitude for the work Mayor Murphy has done to ensure that quality education is a reality for all of Lowell's schoolchildren.
His motion is to request the school committee support, a resolution committing to participate in National Let's Move Initiative. This is an initiative that was begun, actually, by the First Lady to get more youth active and active. It requires the action of this full body and not just a committee, which is what's required by law, before we start to engage the City Council in what needs to be a much fuller discussion, in a community discussion that incorporates all kinds of other input into the entire plan.
Over the past two years, Robert Gignac has been an activist for Lowell's children. He has lobbied tirelessly for the well-being and security of students while they are in school and while they're living in our city. Working for safety, fairness, and quality of education are trademarks of his work on our committee.
Safety and security issues really get to me, and I think it's something that we need to keep on our radar for now and for the future. Once the students do go back to school, just in a few weeks, they'll be in a better environment, a better learning environment, both for the students and staff. It really affects what's going on in the classroom. If somebody needs to use a water bubbler, and the only working water bubbler is down two floors at the main entrance, well, that kid's out of class for 15 minutes to get a, you know, a mouthful of water. So there's a lot of little things that simply add up. I would just like us to look at these things a little deeper and to really put some thought into how we can improve. I attended the Lowell Public Schools, and I want to get back to all it has given me. I'm running to provide the best possible education for the students of this district.
Tonight, please join us in thanking him for all of his contributions.
That's just the end of his term. Ms. Martin?
Absolutely. I would like to defer to my colleague, Mr. Conway. I know that we'd all like to take a moment to say a few words of thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A number of years ago, when I started teaching, and it was before Mr. Gignac was born, I used to come to these meetings, school committee meetings, they didn't have them on television. And as someone that would come in here when I was in my early twenties, I was very impressed to come to these meetings. And I was kind of in awe of the fact that individuals sat here, worked very hard for the purpose of making our system a better school system. And that's why, when I take a look at you, Mr. Mayor, and I take a look at Mr. Gignac, you know, I have to give you a lot of credit for running for office, both of you. It's not an easy task. And, you know, again, when I would come in and look at these meetings, and I'd take a look at the mayor, and I'd say to myself, that's quite a position. And to think that you were the, are the youngest mayor that this system has ever had, and that's an incredible, incredible accomplishment, something that you certainly should be very proud of, and I'm sure your family is too. And I think going forward, Mr. Mayor, whatever walk of life or whatever you do, I wish you all the best for you and your family. You, you know, that I have found over the years is probably the most important thing. And starting off with a young family, again, I congratulate you on that, and I certainly wish you all the best. And Mr. Gignac, again, I was very, very impressed with how you handled yourself at a very young age, and I think a lot of people were very impressed, too. And I congratulate you. It's been a joy to sit here next to you, and I think that somebody that certainly has given a lot to the school system and someone that I think is very articulate and very bright. I know that you will be back again. And again, I congratulate you on the job that you did, and I wish you all the best. And as I said, I'm sure that you will be back in another two years in some capacity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
First, I just want to echo my colleague's sentiments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for working hard on behalf of the Lowell Public Schools. It's a challenging thing doing, crossing over for the City Council. It's not easy to do two meetings back-to-back. I think everybody, their goal is to get out of the school committee meeting, you know, as fast as possible after the city council meetings. But thank you for your efforts. It's very much appreciated. Thank you for your efforts during the budget time, working to convey our message to the city administration as we were going into a very challenging budget year. And, you know, your efforts in that matter with the city administration are one of the reasons why we really came out unscathed this time around, and we'll be having additional challenges going forward in the next year. So personally, thank you, and I think you should be, you know, there's a lot of challenges in any form of government, but you really did a great job on the school side, and I appreciate your efforts on it. And congratulations on your young family as well. To Mr. Gignac, I just, you know, your presence here is, you've been very thoughtful, very intelligent, someone who's taken these issues and really tried to find a way, in a pragmatic way, to make things work for everybody. It's not easy at your age, and I, not to be condescending to someone young, but when I was your age, I would have never survived here with a lot of these different issues just based on disposition alone. So I think that's, and that's saying, you know, that's not saying a lot, but you did a great job. And I think Mr. Conway articulated in two years, I think whatever you desire in the future, if that's public service, I think that's definitely something that you'll achieve again. But more importantly, I think when Mr. Leahy left, who's behind here today, I was more concerned with dealing with somebody that's going to be fun to deal with and get hard work done. And you've been both a hard worker and someone that's been, I truly consider you a friend. So I appreciate your efforts, and I wish you, and I not only luck, but success going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank you, Robert, for your tireless work for our students in the district. The work that you've done on the drug prevention, it's just incredible. The facility subcommittee work, the work orders, they really did, it was a big deal that we didn't have working bubblers. And your dedication to keep our schools safe, I really think you've made a difference for our students. And I know that we'll see you again in the future, and it's been a pleasure to be your colleague. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for being a team builder, a consensus builder for this group, and a real leader, and your sense of humor will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosikowicz?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership. You have been tremendous for us as a committee in pulling us together as a team and getting the work done for our district and for our city. And this work is so, so very important for all of us, for all of our families. And it truly has been a pleasure to serve with you and your, I echo my colleague's sentiments, your humor will definitely be missed in this chamber. I would hope that, given your Tuesday night obligations, I would hope that your Wednesday night obligations over the past two years have offset some of that more contentious, that more contentious atmosphere on the other side. You, Mr. Gignac, it has been a pleasure to serve with you, your commitment to our students, and certainly your perspective of youth, being so close to that. And again, not in a condescending manner, but you certainly bring a perspective to the school committee with those views. Again, your commitment to our facilities, our safety, all of those, you know, close to my heart. I've worked very closely with you on those issues, and I've certainly enjoyed that work. And you will be missed, and I have no doubt at all that we will see you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosikowicz. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, obviously, I share the sentiments that have been expressed by my colleagues. I would say specifically, Mayor Murphy, it has been a great pleasure to work with you. And I think that the commitment, and really, it was very foundational, I think. Your commitment to education was communicated from your inaugural address, and you stayed true to those ideals for two years. Your work here has been very much appreciated, and I think you've been really a very welcome member of this committee, and I think the work you've done as the mayor and as our leader has been impressive, and I, for one, am very, very thankful for it. So I thank you very much for these last two years. So I guess I'm now, I now have to hand you the obligatory clock. I will say that it's scheduled to go off every Wednesday night, every other Wednesday night at 7:00. So let me deliver this to the...
As long as it's not 6:00 already on Tuesday, so...
Yeah, exactly. Just so you can tune in. Because now that you're off the school committee and city council, you'll have all kinds of time.
Seeing if there's really something in there.
You're not wrong to check.
I heard ticking, ticking, and...
Could go either way. You never know.
You never know. Well, you know, what can I say about this committee on public television? You're not done? I'd like to hear a lot about Mr. Gignac right now. Ms. Martin?
Okay, thank you. So secondly, we would like to turn our attention to Mr. Gignac, who has been just, and I think, a wonderful addition to this committee. It has been two years of really great work on your part. We are better off today that you've been here, and I certainly appreciate that. Over the course of these last two years, certainly, your work has been committed, thoughtful. I have always been impressed by the way you've approached every topic that we've been lucky or unlucky enough to deal with, and I think you brought a great, I would even say gravitas to this position. And I really, more than anything, you have earned my greatest respect over these last two years, and I hope to welcome the opportunity to work with you again in the future in any capacity, because, again, the work you've done has been exceptional, and I am extremely thankful for the opportunity to get to know you and to get to work with you. Unfortunately, you also get a very similar clock, so I'll deliver that over to the other side of the room.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to have two minutes to just speak to both of you. Mayor Murphy?
Got a clock to time you?
That's right, and put it on the time. I have said your name about 7,000 times, and I've been in this chamber for 12 years with six different mayors, and I've enjoyed thoroughly working with you, your sense of humor, your levity, but your seriousness about caring about kids and education has been truly a pleasure for me. Your assistance and your leadership during the negotiation sessions and in many other parts of this, our conversations, talking about literacy, poetry, very important things that are important and dear to you, but are essential in changing the outcomes for kids in Lowell. It has been truly appreciated, and I have enjoyed my work with you, and I thank you.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Gignac, Mr. Gignac, you're pure class, and I have worked with over 19 committee members, and one of the most joyful moments I will have is walking around the city with you, and the kids are looking at you, "The guy in the tie, is he a student?" And so you have stood for so many things, your work especially in making sure that children know about drug abuse and bringing real-life scenarios is exemplary. Our trip to the Maury with the canaligator, because you wanted us to make sure that they felt levity, because they had an emergency, and you wanted them to have something to enjoy. You have been so much fun, but also making sure that every... something to enjoy. You have been so much fun, but also making sure that everything that we do, and you're checking in to make sure that we're all okay. That maturity and sense of class has been truly appreciated, and I will miss you personally and professionally, and thank you, and I wish you the best. Lord knows what you're going to do, but I'm watching.
Mr. Gignak?
You can go first.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Gignak. Well, what, what, what can I say about this committee on public television? And with a newspaper reporter present, well, a reporter, anyway. It's really been a pleasure working with all of you. What you do is the city's most important work, and I'm proud of what's been accomplished here together. Ms. Scott and Ms. Rosickiwich, I appreciate your perspectives. This term is parents of schoolchildren and your contributions to the work of, of this committee. And Ms. Martin, what I appreciate most, I think, is that I will miss your curriculum subcommittee reports. And when I say I miss, I mean I won't be there. But I'm glad that you will be here, because this board has benefited from your experience and your leadership and your enduring passion for the Lowell Public Schools. Mr. Delary, this fall, you topped the ticket, and there's a reason for that. If anyone here in this room can explain it to me, I'm, I'm all ears, but, but Mr. Delary, you've been a very good colleague and a good sport, and I wish you well the next term. And Mr. Gignak, in many ways, you've been a model school committee member for any age. Informed, engaged, in your own thoughtful way, you've been a leader on many issues, and I trust that you'll find a way to continue making important contributions to the life of our community. Mr. Conway, Mr. Vice Chair, you've become a grandfather and come back from knee surgery, and who knows what else. It's a miracle you're still here. And you were here when I couldn't be, whether I was away at a conference, or becoming a father myself. You suited up and filled in like Johnny Gomes during the World Series, or so I'm told. Actually, I think you told me. But Mary, I, I think, thought I forgot her. I think she hoped that I forgot her. But I thank her for putting up with me for the last two years. And Madam Superintendent, you, Paul, and I will always have Cincinnati. But it's been an honor to work with you and such a committed educator and administrator who cares so deeply about what's most important. And I thank you for your leadership and the team with whom you share it, particularly the teachers, whose sole focus is on helping our children fully develop their talents. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Last night, the, the weather conspired to, to keep this display of gratitude delayed until today. But I do wish to thank the people of Lowell, who've given me the support and this rare privilege to represent them in our city these past four years. And I also wish to thank my family, who's given me so much support. Dan and Denise, Gronya, Daniel, Allison, my mother and father, Joan and Dan, who gave more than 70 years' service combined to Lowell Public Schools. And finally, I thank my wife, Allegra, and my son, O'Sheen, for waiting up for me this last night, and every other, for inspiring me and for teaching me. That if you build a better city for all its children, you will have built a great city for everyone. I thank you all, and I wish you a happy Christmas. Mr. Gignak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your kind words. I'll keep this as brief as I possibly can. This meeting has been great. First off, I'll start with the mayor. You've been a pleasure to work with. You, your sense of humor has been great. You and I have spent many times together, you know, here, whether it's here at the old court, but we, we have a good time, and I think your, your thoughtfulness and your, your, your courage to bring forward certain issues is, is truly appreciated on this school committee, so thank you. Ms. Scott, I appreciate all the work that you do as a parent, because you do have a unique perspective. We've worked closely together on a number of issues that I think have truly benefited the school district. Ms. Rosickiwich, you and I have met many times with Mr. Delary on the facility subcommittee, so we've seen everything from a dirty toilet to a water bubbler that's spewing green liquid. So we've had many different experiences that, you know, have, have truly benefited the city, because as you might have noticed from that video, all the water bubbles are working now. I'll take the credit for that, because it's the least I can do. But it's been a pleasure working together. Ms. Martin, you bring a unique perspective to the committee with your tenure here, and your curriculum subcommittee reports are lengthy. However, it's, it's, it's by far the most important work that this committee does, and it's, it's truly a thankless job, because without a solid curriculum, the school district wouldn't, wouldn't be where it is today. Mr. Delary, it's been a pleasure sitting next to you. Although we spent most of the meeting joking around, you truly have your heart in the district, and, and as the mayor said, you deserve topping the ticket. You've been around for a while, and you know the ins and outs, and, and you truly care about the kids of this city, and it's, you are a friend, and you'll be missed. Mr. Conway, this is the same guy that gave me detention many times, but it's, 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 it's been a pleasure sitting next to you, and, and it's, it's a unique relationship that Mr. Conway and I have, because we, the age difference is, is, is quite sporadic. But Mr. Conway and I have spent many, many hours on the phone discussing many issues, and, and as I mentioned the first time I ran, I, I paid attention to Mr. Conway's first campaign, because I thought the high school needed somebody that truly knew the ins and outs, and, and Mr. Conway definitely does. And his heart is definitely where he spent most of his life, which is, which is at Lowell High School. So it's, it's truly been a pleasure serving with you on the school committee and on the Lowell High School Subcommittee. And you two are, have been a tremendous friend, and, and I will see you again, whether it's two years or, you know, 20 years, but I will see you again, whether it's this seat or over there, doesn't matter. But Madam Superintendent, it's been a pleasure working with you. The walking around the Maori school was, was very fun. You're right, the kids weren't mostly impressed with the canaligator. They, they wanted to know who I was, and if I was from, one kid asked me if I played for the Spinners, and I said, "No, I'm, I'm far too short." But that was a fun day, and, and that's why I ran, to do things positive for this, for the school department. And, and you've been a true advocate for, for making the school department the best it can be. And you truly know the ins and outs and, and, and what makes up this school district, and whether it's, we have a, a really complex district here, and, and you know everything about it. And I'm truly grateful for the fact that I've been able to work with you over the past two years. Mr. Lang, Mr. Lang, the thankless deputy superintendent, it's, it's been a pleasure working with you, because you take a lot of heat from this committee. However, you and I have become, become close friends, and I, I think the school department and city truly benefit from the work that you do. And thank you. I hope you stick around. Assistant Superintendent Claire Abrams, you and I have not worked together very closely over the past two years, but I think you do a remarkable job with the curriculum of the district. You have the most boring job with, throughout the city of Lowell, and I say that with the utmost respect, because I've attended your subcommittees and it's, I fell asleep. But it, it is, it is truly important, and, and the public should know all the work that you do. And you and I currently, and Assistant Superintendent Durkin are currently working on a very large grant in my day job, that I hopefully will be able to bring forward to this committee within a few months. So I look forward to that. But I truly had a pleasure working with you over the past few years, and I wish you the best of luck, and I think you're going to do a great job. Assistant Superintendent Janine Durkin, we've only worked together for a few months now, but it's been great. You and, I remember you and I sat in your office at the freshman academy, and we talked about something very serious, and it, it, it really opened my eyes to how devoted you are to this district and the students. So I think you're doing a remarkable job, and hopefully we'll keep you around for a very long time, because you are a young, a young woman, and I think the district is truly, truly benefiting from all the work that you do. And I will be, I have to acknowledge former Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy, because she, her and I work probably the closest together out of everybody in the school department on the opiate abuse prevention awareness. And she is someone that I truly admire, and I've missed since, since Ms. Durkin has taken over. But she is a person that cares about the city. She cares about the students, she cares about the parents, everybody involved, and she's a good person. So also, thank my grandparents who are over there. Thank you.
Mr. Gignak? Dustin Pedroia played for Lowell Spinners, so never sell yourself short. You've been a great addition to this committee, and we wish you all the best. And at that, I entertain your motion, Mr. Gignak, to adjourn. So move, my Mr. Gignak, second to my Mr. Delary. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.